Senator's gonna be here just a second. Okay, good evening. Welcome to the my day December ninth, two thousand twenty-four City of West Point Business Meeting. We'll begin the meeting with a prayer by the Reverend Gerald Levin.
Let's pray. God be with you today. We thank you for your love and grace and mercy for the opportunity to serve this city and to strive to make it a place where all can thrive. We ask your blessings upon every person in this room in the powerful name of Jesus. Amen.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to call the business meeting to order. Counsel, you have the minutes from the November eleventh, two thousand twenty-four Business Meeting in your information packet. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes? Any second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, you have the financial report in your information packet as well. Do I hear a motion to approve the financial report?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, tonight we have monthly reports and we'll begin with the utilities department. Mr. Ennam.
Mr. Mayor, I don't really have a report. I forgot to give y'all something the last time I was here, so I need to go over it weekly.
Okay.
We're gonna be mailing out some letters and I'd like to give y'all a little bit of information because I'm sure you'll be getting some phone calls. Really don't want you to be completely in the dark, but sorry I didn't do it last time. The only way I know to give, to tell you about what it is is to give you a little background. I'll be brief, I promise. In two thousand eleven, Congress passed the Reduction in Lead in Drinking Water Act. And then the Safe Drinking Water Act, it reduces allowable amount of lead in piping, fittings, things like that in water systems. It kind of took a stalemate from two thousand eleven to two thousand fourteen until the Flint, Michigan water crisis and things kicked in and picked up after that because it kind of highlighted the reasoning behind it. I'm sure y'all all remember that. In two thousand seventeen, the Trump administration initiated the updates to lead copper rule. The EPA proposed lead copper rule revision in October of that year. And key components, develop a nationwide lead service line inventory. So that's what we've been doing for the past three years. Another key factor in it was lowering the action level for lead in drinking water from fifteen parts per billion to ten parts per billion. Don't worry, we're well below that. We stay below that. After a series of reviews by the Biden administration, this plan was released to the public in two thousand twenty-one. Went out, it got to the states for enforcement, for oversight and enforcement actions. The states added some things to it. Every state didn't do this for the service lines, but Georgia did historically. And there's some reasoning behind it. If you want to know, I can explain it. But if not, just call me later and I can tell you what I'm sure you know. They added that we have to go out and do all the service lines two inches and below and we have to label what they are, both on the city's own side and the customer's side. And Georgia added galvanized piping to that rule. Because historically, in Georgia, the southeast in general, if you have a galvanized water service, that was connected to the water main with a galvan, with a lead gooseneck fitting. I don't think I've ever encountered a galvanized service that wasn't connected to the water main. So they come in, so now we have to notify the customers that are being fed through those. We finished our survey, got it in on time. The rules went out, the rule went into effect in October. First thing in the rule, we have to notify all the customers that are being fed by this, that they are getting water through, possibly through a galvanized line that's connected with a lead gooseneck to the water main. We don't know that for sure without digging it up, but like I said, historically, that's the way they were put in in the southeast. We have ten years to replace those lines and that's what the letter will be. I think y'all got the letter. I'm not sure if you don't. I can get you a copy of it. So tomorrow, we'll be sending these letters out. We only have forty-four customers that we've got to send these letters to. So we have ten years that we'll have to have all these lines replaced.
Just at the tap or all the way? If it's a lead at the tap, can you just tap next to it and reconnect to their galvanized?
The unripe rule is if we know it's there, we've got to remove it. We've got to remove it from the water system.
The lead collar, but I'm saying their pipe though.
Yep, and the reason being is water by itself, just in general, is slightly on the corrosive side. You know that. There's been some medical explanations and things over the past and Flint, Michigan really enhanced the knowledge on it. There's potential that lead could be leached out of that gooseneck fitting and it would stick to the inside of those galvanized pipes. And over time, it could release. I don't know. I'm not the scientist that done it, so I can't really tell you that. But we have till twenty thirty-four to replace those thirty-four services.
Forty-four.
Forty-four. Forty-four. It was forty-three, but we found another last week.
So what if they house still galvanized?
That's a good question. I'm sure Alex has heard about this rule a lot more than I have. The way that EPA wrote the amendment to the rule, it encompasses the entire service from the water main to the house. There's a disconnect there because the water system's own the service from the water main to the water meter and the customer owns from the water meter to the house. We haven't gotten that far into it yet. I'm sure there'll be some, there's already been some discussions. Alex may know more about that than I do. I know he's heard about this. But I don't know. And I only know of one of these customers on this list that the galvanized is from the meter to the house. The Transportation Enhancement Act, it was just passed a couple of years ago, did, they did include fifteen billion dollars in that act to help with this, but to this day, nobody knows when that money's gonna be available or how you're gonna get it or how it will be distributed. So I wouldn't suggest waiting for that. But we're gonna send these letters out. I know y'all are gonna get calls, so.
So do you have any good news?
I see you while you're looking at me.
So you think there's potentially only one house from the meter to the house is galvanized?
I think so. I'm not sure. I have to go back and look at that list. It's like two thousand meters.
Because the city's gonna be responsible to the meter.
Yes, we own from the main to the meter.
To the meter, so they're taking care of that. So it could just be just one house that's an issue?
Could be. But the way the rule's written is from the water main to the, to this building has to be replaced by twenty thirty-four.
Well, for those forty-four, if you know.
If they're, if they're galvanized?
If they're galvanized.
Okay.
And we've identified the ones that are galvanized.
I thought you just said it was just one.
Well, it's only from the meter to the house.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at, which is the homeowner's responsibility.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
I can't answer that.
Well, for those forty-four that you know you have to replace, do you have to check further?
No, we've already, we've already checked and identified what they're made out of. We've done that over the last three years.
Any more questions, Jim? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the city clerk. So we'll call upon acting city clerk, Chris T. Mason.
Mine's a really short. So the month of October, we had five new businesses, I mean, five new business license. We said we had four open records requests. We had one minor vehicle accident that was in the police department. And we had nine new utility residential customers. That's not including the ones we've lost. So currently, we have the two thousand twenty-five calendar available. I gave it to you guys last week. I think I emailed it to you. But it's available here and on the city website if anybody needs it. The first meeting will be Tuesday, January seventh at five thirty P M. Ones that are attending, Cities United with GMA, I emailed to you today your schedule. Please review and just let me know if anything needs to be changed. And then the city has received property tax payments. Bills were mailed out in October and the due date is December twentieth. Also, the city is receiving occupational tax and/or business license renewals for the year two thousand twenty-five. The current two thousand twenty-four certificates will expire December thirty-first.
Thank you. Now we have economic development. Megan?
Good evening, Mayor Tramal and City Council. Again, my name's Megan Richardson. I'm the Economic Development Director for the City of West Point and my role as Economic Development Director is to support the mission of the West Point Development Authority and the Downtown West Point Development Authority and provide economic development services directly to the city. The West Point Development Authority and Downtown West Point Development Authority do meet monthly. West Point Development Authority meeting is held on the fourth Monday of each month at twelve o'clock noon at City Hall and the Downtown Development Authority meets on the second Tuesday of each month at nine fifteen A M. at City Hall. The city had a very successful paddle cleanup with the Chattahoochee River Keepers on October eighteenth. We had twelve volunteers. The river was nearly trash-free. We found some fishing lines, a cast net, and a few other items, and the paddle was quite enjoyable. The resealing and restriping of the parking lot located behind the New Horizon Theater between Seventh and Fourth Avenue was completed the last week of October. I submitted a completed Georgia Economic Placemaking Collaborative Application to Georgia Cities Foundation and the selection announcement is scheduled for December thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. The second level application for the Georgia D N R Recreational Trails Program Grant has been cleared of the National Environmental Policy Act by the Federal Highway Administration. The remaining steps prior to the commencement of work are between the Georgia Department of Natural Resources and the City of West Point. I anticipate that we will have a notice to proceed in the first quarter of two thousand twenty-five. The project must be completed within twenty-four months from the notice to proceed. Demolition continues on the Coca-Cola site building. The current contractor is removing steel and we will have a second contractor remove the remaining debris and building foundation. City staff has met with engineers to discuss civil design and the subdivision plot is being completed in order to execute a conveyance agreement with Premier Hotel Corporation for the hotel parcel. Premier Hotel Corporation's franchise application for a national hotel brand location in West Point was approved in November. We will be happy to share more information once the West Point Development Authority executes a binding conveyance agreement with Premier Hotel Corporation. I attended the Southern Economic Development Council's Emerging Leader Conference, the University of Georgia's Workforce Pipeline Conference, and was a panelist at the Georgia City County Management Association Fall Conference for shared house counties and cities manage big community investments. I would like to mention that Kia celebrated fifteen years of manufacturing in West Point on November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Since beginning production in two thousand nine, Kia, Georgia has assembled more than four point five million vehicles and helped create more than seven thousand jobs in the city limits of West Point. A few weeks ago, Kia also announced the addition of the second electric vehicle and fifth overall vehicle. The E V six will be assembled in West Point. Startup production on the E V six is in the beginning of two thousand twenty-five. During the past year and a half, Kia, Georgia has undergone a transformation that allows the production of E Vs and the plant traditional products all along the same line. The two hundred and seventeen million expansion created approximately two hundred jobs in West Point. Last, I want to share about two new downtown businesses. Staking Company is a new restaurant in downtown which opened in August at seven nineteen Third Avenue. Staking Company offers a warm and inviting atmosphere perfect for family dinners, business lunches, and special celebrations. The diverse menu features a variety of dishes to please all tastes. Enjoy fresh seafood, state-of-the-art chicken, and signature steaks. Pair your meal with a selection from the extensive wine and bourbon lists or a crafty cocktail for the perfect dining experience. Also, Pack and Ship is now open and located at seven twenty-one Third Avenue in downtown West Point. Pack and Ship currently offers FedEx shipping and returns, printing, gifts, balloons, packing, notary, fingerprinting, shredding, and mailboxes, and Amazon returns and UPS is coming soon. That is all I have for my report tonight.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, H R.
Mayor and council, good evening. Employee overview for the month of October. We were staffed at one hundred and three total employees, ninety full-time, thirteen part-time. There were seven, nine job openings during the month of October, two part-time fire department, seven full-time positions in the P D, but I'm happy to say that we filled two of those correctly. And we also have three interviews this week lined up, so we're very hopeful there. There were two terminations during the month of October, one open workers' comp claim. During the month of October, we had three employees to celebrate anniversaries. Megan Richardson, our Economic Development Director, nine years. Tavis Edwards, our water and wastewater treatment superintendent, celebrated eighteen years. And our very own city manager, Ed Moon, nineteen years with the City of West Point. So congratulations to those employees. Also, during the month of October, our annual employee appreciation luncheon was held, October twenty-third, at the Deco. Lunch was catered by Pig Out this year, a local food truck. The meal was absolutely delicious. We had a great turnout this year, employees and department heads, so that was a great time as well. During our appreciation luncheon, we do recognize employees for their service awards. They are given in five-year increments. This year, we had ten service award recipients. Celebrating five years, Jeff Butler, Water Distribution Sewer Collection Supervisor, Jason Fulgen, our senior lineman in our electric department, Kristen King, she's a police sergeant in our Criminal Investigations Department, William Fosting, who serves as our police lieutenant, and Lindsey White, she's at our Customer Service Utility Building Department. Celebrating ten years, receiving their ten-year service award, excuse me, Tobias Buckner. He is one of our utility service worker in our water department. And yours truly, I've celebrated ten years of employment. Fifteen-year service award recipients, James Outman, he's our chief water treatment plant operator, and DeR Solomon, he serves as a sergeant with our fire department. Twenty-five-year service award was awarded this year to our fire chief, Derek Staley. Again, that's all I have for the month of October. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance.
Good evening. Reporting, October two thousand twenty-four, finance report. The October report is currently at eighty-three percent of the total budget. Starting with general government, revenue is sixty percent with an expense of ninety-two percent. Police revenue is sixty percent, expenses ninety-five percent. Fire, sixty percent revenue with an expense of ninety-six percent. Highway and streets, sixty percent revenue with an eighty, excuse me, ninety-eight percent in expenses. Highways and streets, sixty percent revenue with a expense of ninety-eight percent. Planning and zoning, revenue is sixty percent, expense a hundred and forty-four percent. Economic development, sixty percent in revenue, eighty-six percent in expenses. Nine-one-one communications, seventy-nine percent revenue with a ninety-nine percent expenses. Water and sewer, ninety-nine percent in revenue, expenses ninety-three percent. Electric, eighty percent revenue with a seventy-four percent expense. Gas, eighty-one percent, revenue ninety percent expenses. And sanitation, seventy percent with an expense of ninety-nine percent. Any questions?
Thank you. Okay, city manager Ed, please.
Okay, I got a couple of things for you. In the last meeting, we talked about House Bill five eighty-one, the homestead exemption. They have a correction for that presentation. The FLOST, the, will actually collect on the same sales tax as the SPOSS and the laws. You know, we talked, I said that it was just on specific items. That's not correct. Those specific items are, have to do with the state's sales tax. It's in the law, but I misrepresented that. So it collects on all sales tax items, so that would certainly increase the revenue that can be generated by FLOST. The exit two roundabouts, I had a call with G D I on that and they are saying now that they're moving out the completion schedule to late February, early March, five twenty-five. So.
It's too hard to come to work, right?
On another project, on the Kia Parkway paving project, we had a pre-con meeting on that and they anticipate that that's gonna start April next year. C W Matthews is the contractor, the same contractor as the roundabouts, and they have ninety days to complete the paving once they start, based on the date of the. The last item I have is something that we added to the agenda. I sent y'all out some information on it, but it's House Bill four fifty-one. Basically, that law was passed in twenty-four and it orders public entities that have employees, volunteers, that work for us have to be provided lump sum insurance for P T S D. The benefit will become effective January one, twenty twenty-five, and it's the reason why we had to add that to the agenda for this meeting. The G R M, for G M A, is offering that insurance. They are the only entity, my understanding, that is offering that, so we have to go through them. It's a MetLife product. The cost to the city for that insurance is about six thousand sixty-eight dollars. There's no cost to the employees for the insurance. The law requires the entity to pay the entire fee. It provides lifetime critical illness lump sum diagnosis benefit. There's a cap on that, but it does provide that. And then it provides long-term disability for P T S D benefits with an income replacement of sixty percent. You know, if they go through the diagnosis and are found to have P T S D. So you have a resolution tonight on the agenda for that, for that item.
Any questions? All right, then I'm gonna review the agenda tonight. We have the two thousand twenty-five city budget. We have the annexation ordinance at five twenty-three Warner Road. The rezoning ordinance at five twenty-three Warner Road. We have the West Point Development Authority appointment. We have the resolution for the American Rescue Plan Act. We have the city clerk appointment and the Georgia Municipal Association of Georgia First Responder P T S D program. Do I hear a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
Some move.
Second? Couple seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, we will begin with the two thousand twenty-five city budget. Do I hear a motion to adopt the two thousand twenty-five proposed city budget? The total proposed budget, including all funds, is twenty-nine million, eight hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and ten thousand, fourteen dollars and six cents. Operational budgets, electric, eleven point five million, general government, nine million. Water and sewer, four million, gas, one million. Sanitation, point five million, and SPOSS, two point nine million. There is a four percent cost of living adjustment also included. The electric meter, the electric includes meter replacement and remote reading technology, increased contractor costs for maintenance, purchase vacuum trailer. Water and sewer includes meter replacement and remote reading technology includes material costs. Gas includes meter replacement and remote reading technology and increased material costs. General funds, SPOSS, six, general government hire, part-time, or contract maintenance. Field use service director position, purchase admin fleet vehicle, police building improvements, speed detection trailer, fire EMS, purchase ambulance. And SPOSS six will be public works, increased paving and equipment. SPOSS six will also include in the budget a proposed rate increase due to increases in costs across all goods and service. Water and sewer rate increase, six percent, garbage rate increase, two point nine percent, curbside trash collection, one dollar per month increase. Residential water bill, ten point five, four five times six percent is a sixty-three percent increase per cubic feet, C C F, cubic feet. Three point four three times six percent is a twenty percent increase in the two thousand twenty-four, five C C F. Ham waste is a two percent increase, which is, it looks like a thirty-five percent increase or a twelve dollar forty-seven cent curbside trash. Six fifty plus a dollar plus seven fifty total for average residential customer are two ninety per month. Wow. Okay, I hope y'all got all that. And I need a motion? Any discussion?
One correction on the way you read it out was hard enough, but you kept saying thirty-five percent, sixty-three percent. That's thirty-five cents.
Thirty-five, did I say thirty-five percent? It's thirty-five cents. Thank you.
She does a great job.
I felt like I was getting like a motion.
We're proud of you.
All right, so we got a motion. Do we have a second? Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Annexation ordinance at five twenty-three Warner Road. Do I hear a motion to approve an ordinance to annex five twenty-three Warner Road to annex to the, to annex to the city contiguous real property owned by Safe Truck Parking Solutions L L C and located on Warner Road consisting of approximately twenty-five point five nine acres? Motion's second. Discussion?
I would like to read the caption before you.
Please, please, sir.
You're good. And then if you want to have any discussion, then it's up for a vote.
Didn't realize there was a caption. Go ahead.
That's okay. An ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of West Point to annex to the city contiguous real property owned by Safe Truck Parking Solutions L L C and located off of Warner Road consisting of approximately twenty-five point five nine acres more or less and commonly identified as five two three Warner Road, West Point, Georgia, to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes. And this is up for a vote by the council tonight. If there's any discussion, if not.
Any more questions? Why did you offer to read the first one for me? Okay, have we had a motion? We have this record? You got a motion and second listed? All in favor? Any opposed? Would you like to do the second, this next?
I can read the second one first if you want to.
The rezoning? Go ahead.
All right, now that it has been annexed, we're now asking for rezoning. An ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of West Point to amend the code of the city, to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city so as to reclassify the used zone of real estate within the city limits and currently owned by Safe Truck Parking Solutions L L C and located at five two three Warner Road, West Point, Georgia, consisting of approximately twenty-five point five nine acres more or less from G C General Commercial to M X D one, mixed-use development, to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
All right, what he said. Do I have a? We have a motion, second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We've had signs out there, right? And nobody's come in here to say anything negative towards doing all this.
Nope.
And, and public hearings and there's, the only, the only comment was, oh, laugh, the developer.
Yeah. We gave ample opportunity. Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. I'll be sure and check next time. Do I hear a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the allocation of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds, amending the city budget? I'll come back. Okay, let's go back. I'm sorry, I jumped ahead. Thank you, Sandra. I need a motion to appoint to a five-year term to the West Point Development Authority. You have three people in your packet. I need someone to make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to nominate Carter Brown for this position.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Great.
Okay, now, do I hear a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the allocation of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds, amending the city budget? The city will use the $1,395,532 of funds for revenue replacement for government services, salaries and public safety, and city budget be amended for the 2023 and 2024 to account for the change of funding.
So moved.
Motion is second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now I need a motion to appoint someone as the West Point City Clerk.
I'd like to motion to appoint Kristen Lester.
Absolutely.
Second.
Second.
Second, all right, any discussion?
I think she's going to be a great.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next is the, do I hear a motion to approve a resolution to add membership in a fund of Georgia Interlocal Risk Management Agency for the Georgia Municipal Association Georgia First Responder PTSD Program? In 2024, the state passed an unfunded mandate, House Bill 451, ordering public entities that have employed or volunteer first responders, providing lump sum and income replacement, long-term disability PTSD benefits, PTSD benefits, effective January 1, 2025. The cost of the benefits is estimated to cost $6,068 in 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we need to have some announcements before we adjourn this meeting. I do want to thank the Active Life Center. On the 4th, they had a fish fry. They invited us all out. And thanks, Sandra, for reminding me, or I would have forgotten, but it was good. Really appreciate them doing that. What else do we have?
Don't forget, I think I mentioned earlier on the last meeting about the event that's going to take place at the Depot on Wednesday at 1:30. Chattahoochee Hospice is going to have a session grief, how to handle grief or coping with grief during the holidays. And it's a free event. Light refreshments will be served, and the chaplain, Michael Stickers, will conduct that meeting. I also want to thank Lama Zeta Omega Chapter Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated for their donation to the West Point Youth Services. Also, thank you to those who made a donation and purchased an ad for the academia. And as you can see, we've already started using that money to help within the community. Also, want to send condolences from all of us on the death of Ulysses Macklemore, who owned Macklemores in downtown West Point for many, many years. That's all I have.
Anybody else? Any announcements?
I move we adjourn.
Okay. We have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Everybody on the stage. All right. Hey, next meeting is Tuesday, January 7th, 5:30. This is a meeting, it'll be January 13th. Y'all have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.